I'm going to open the regular meeting of the board trustees and we'll start with the pledge. So I did notice that we have a couple of students from the participation in government class here. So I just want to welcome you to our regular monthly meeting. We usually hold two meetings a month, a work session and a regular monthly meeting. The work session is generally held the first Tuesday of the month and in that one we wear our street clothes, we sit around informally and we discuss things going on in the village, things that may be coming up at the next meeting, that sort of thing. We don't usually take any official action at that meeting, sometimes we do it as necessary. This meeting is our regular monthly meeting and this is the meeting where we do the official business of the village, where we pay our bills, we enact any legislation, I get authorized to enter into contracts, things like that. So we'll be doing some official things tonight and you'll see what those are. Since we have you guys as visitors and since I just can't get the teaching thing out of my blood, I taught for 32 years, where is appropriate, I'll take a minute and just kind of briefly explain what it is we're doing and why we're doing it. But at this point, we'll start a meeting and I'll ask the clerk to call roll.
Trustee Mathis.
Here.
Trustee Gifford.
Here.
Trustee Zaman.
Here.
Mayor Casker.
Here. One thing I was going to tell the pig students as well is if you want the agenda, it's on the table in the back there. And if you have an agenda and are looking at it, you see that I'm going to depart from our agenda and I'm going to move us to item number four, swearing in Captain Jim Jones. So if I could have the fire chief then. Is he standing over here? Oop, I think I'm going to ask him, sorry. Here over there, I'm not done talking yet. So for you guys to take, we have a paid fire department in the Village of Scotia, we also have a paid police department, public works, we're a full service community. And if you decide that you're going to be a fireman, you would start as a firefighter. In the Scotia Fire Department, you would be a firefighter, paramedic. So you not only fight fires, but actually the majority of your job is a medical service to the village and we offer the highest level of medical service possible in paramedic. Once you're a firefighter for a certain period of time, if you want to move up the ladder, you can become a lieutenant. The responsibilities of a lieutenant are to run a shift in the absence of a captain and they also have some other administrative responsibilities too. And then after that, if you're going to move up the ladder one more time, you would become a captain, that's the highest level of on the floor officer that we have, beyond that would be the chief. So in Scotia right now, we generally have three lieutenants and three captains because we run three shifts. We are lucky enough to have a very young force in our fire department and for a period of time, we had so many young guys that our chief felt that, I'm sorry, they needed a little bit more experience in order to have the wisdom to become a captain. So we were lucky enough to have some good candidates for captain, went through an interview process and tonight, we're proud to swear in and pin our newest captain in the fire department. So James, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Hit that, hit that, please be and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, James Jones.
I, James Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
I will support the constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the state of New York.
Constitution of the state of New York.
And the code of the Village of Scotia.
The code of the Village of Scotia.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of captain.
The duties of captain.
And the Scotia Fire Department.
And the Scotia Fire Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I've got the chief pinning and then I'll say our congratulations.
I'm not sure I have to come up if you want to.
If you want to come right up here and take pictures, you can come right up here and do that.
You want to go back to the.
Yeah. I always tell family and friends, this only happens one time, so if you want to come right up and take pictures close up, do it because it's not going to happen again. Okay, so now typically what we do is we take a short five-minute recess for the family and friends who came just for that part of the ceremony and do not wish to remain for the rest of our meeting. We'll take that five-minute recess and then we'll reconvene. So. Item number three, which is privilege of the floor. For participation in government student, privilege of the floor is the public's opportunity to address the board, a two-way conversation, it's the opportunity for the public to address the board and make any statements that they wish to. So the clerk is right now getting the signing sheet, we'll see if anybody has signed in. And we have Jerry Moore. My comments will last approximately nine minutes and 30 seconds if that's all right. My name's Jerry Moore, J-E-R-R-Y-M-O-O-R-E, and anyone who wants a copy of what I say tonight can contact me at jerrymore@nycap rr.com or request a copy from the village clerk who has an email of this and who also might charge you for the copy. When I began my research into the connection between Village trustees and Freedom Park Foundation, I had no idea I'd be going down the rabbit hole of cronyism, broken laws, a non-functioning ethics board, a deceptive sewage plant study, a pathetically written sewage services contract with Schenectady, and a Dear Sewer Customer letter with the seeming intent of misleading our neighbors more than informing them. I had no idea rabbits lived in such dark, deep, damp, stinky holes, but I'm sure the trustees smell nothing, which reminds me, I brought a poster tonight, I'll show it to the YouTube audience first. At the top are pictures of the four trustees who have repeatedly voted to move forward with the process of bringing a sewage treatment plant closer to Collins and Freedom Parks and closer to homes of our neighbors. At the September 14th trustees meeting, I proved this is an economic boondoggle and you can find a copy of my presentation at www.scotiasewagecac.com, a worthy organization that I do not belong to for their own protection. The trustees are pictured above an admittedly doctored satellite photo of Schenectady Sewer Sewage Treatment Plant. Gases whirl around the plant and vapors rise past the closed pinned noses of the trustees who happily complain, who happily proclaim, "We smell nothing." At the bottom of the posters, readers are invited to Google sewer plant smells. When they do that, they will find link after link to articles reporting about smells coming from modern sewage plants, dirty diaper smells, rotten egg smells, smells that smell like they come from toilets not flushed for 10 days, smells that get worse with rain or wind or cool nights or warm days, and articles telling people not to purchase homes near sewage treatment plants. Many, many articles. Now I asked the trustees, should we not believe everything we read on the internet or should we not believe everything we read in Dear Sewer Customer Letters written by mayors who say, quote, "Modern treatment plants produce no detectable odor beyond the confines of the plant," close quote. Some of the Google links refer to plants built or upgraded this decade, maybe those Even more interesting is the whole paragraph entitled, "What About Smell?" It has five sentences and the only one dealing with smell is the one I just read. The sentence following it says, "They also require only two people to operate, smell, staffing, smell, staffing." Aren't paragraphs supposed to have unity, order, coherence, and completeness? Chris, how can a master-degreed, master-degreed retired public school teacher write a paragraph about smells that go from no discernible smells to the number of operators who, by the way, won't be village employees but who will be driving on an entrance road away from residents? Maybe the employees won't be using deodorant and it's important to keep them away from residential areas. After all, why waste money on deodorant if you work at a sewage plant? Thank goodness they won't be Scotia employees. You say, Chris, that you want to build a sewage plant because the sewer charge is a significant part of our bill, implying that our sewer rates will go down. How much, Chris? You don't say. Yonim, you don't even promise that our rates will go down. Isn't it true that our sewer rates will go up even if we build the plant? Your study projects our construction and operation costs, but it doesn't project our sewer rates. Why not? Directly impacting our sewer rates is our probable liability to Schenectady to pay capital costs after we terminate the service contract. I've discussed paragraph 26 of the Sewage Treatment Agreement in emails with the village clerk. That paragraph makes Scotia sewer customers liable for our proportionate share of the total cost of repairs and upgrades made to the Schenectady plant while the contract is in force. The contract is ambiguous about whether sewer customers owe the entire amount even after the contract expires or if we only owe the amortized portion of the total debt inured and only so long as the contract is in effect. Frankly, I don't care about what you think paragraph 26 means and I don't care about what you think the city of Schenectady thinks it means. And I don't even care about what the village attorney thinks it means, especially since she never should have approved such awful language, assuming you had her review the terms of the contract. What I know is that the language is ambiguous and that it's in Schenectady's interest to assert that we owe the entire amount of repairs and upgrades made while the contract was enforced in proportion to our usage of the plant. That means Scotia sewer customers could end up paying for two plants at once. There is absolutely no way any trustee or any resident should vote for a new plant without a letter of clarification from Schenectady expressly stating that once the contract expires, no further bills for anything will be submitted to the village. Finally, page one of the bogus study says, quote, "The costs associated under the current agreement with the city are speculated in the contract and are primarily based on wastewater flow. Historical information can be used to determine the annual cost of the lease option with Schenectady." On page 14 of the bogus study, city contract costs range from $758,000 in year one to $794,000 in year 10. Do the trustees know how much our sewage bill for July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016 is? It's $563,743.05. The projected first-year contract cost owed to Schenectady is $194,257 or 34% higher than our actual cost this year. What kind of historical information is McDonald Engineering using? I've reviewed our sewer costs from 1967 to the present. There is nothing in the historical data that comes close to justifying $758,000 value used in the study. Moreover, McDonald provides us with no spreadsheets or tables to show how it arrived at $758,000 by using historical information. It doesn't show us Schenectady's operating costs or our payments, it doesn't show our share of paragraph 26 expenses. I asked the village clerk if she could project our paragraph 26 expenses for the next five years and she said that Schenectady hasn't given us the data to do that calculation. If she doesn't have the data, I know McDonald Engineering doesn't, which is why it gives us nothing. $758,000 is just a black box, completely unjustified and completely unjustifiable. As pointed out in the earlier work session, you can get a consultant to say anything you want. You guys thought it was pretty funny when that was said last time. And it's just the completely unjustified and unjustifiable number that provides the only basis for making the claim that building a new sewage plant closer to Collins and Freedom Parks is a better option than leasing treatment services from Schenectady. Do the trustees think we are complete ignoramuses out here? Do we look like a basket of deplorables? We demand the clarification letter from Schenectady about paragraph 26. We demand to see the historical information used by McDonald Engineering to calculate the cost of leasing services from Schenectady. We demand to see the spreadsheets where the historical information produces the number of $758,000. We demand to see a projection of our sewer rates. We demand it because the Dear Sewer Customer Letter is a bad John Oliver joke. We demand it because sound judgment requires us to verify the crucial assertions you make. We demand it so we can fulfill our duty to make informed decisions that will affect our community for decades. If you don't want to give it to us, I'll be accepting your resignations at the door at the end of the meeting because you have no business running our government. Okay, next signed up is Mark, I'm going to history your last name, I can pray about Mark.
Travis.
Business Doc?
Yeah.
From Seton, Washington, D.C.
As I just learned about this meeting just a few days ago, I haven't really prepared much, so I'm going to be fairly brief. Going from what I know of the study, McDonald Engineering, you know, they produced a study and they stand to make 1.4 million should the study go through, should construction plant go through. Being an engineer myself, ethics is really heavily on my mind when I do my job. In my opinion, I think this is a conflict of interest. I highly suggest that the board go with a third party and get an objective opinion.
I just want to make one comment regarding that because it's been brought up a couple of times, the link between McDonald and the final construction project. McDonald did do this study for us at the time. At the point, if it becomes true, that we're going to move forward and decide to engineer and build a plant, then that would be a bid out and the successful bidder would be whoever is a successful bidder according to our specs. So there's not a, you know, there's not a, there's not a follow-through.
The appendix says something different.
I'm just telling you how it is.
I'm happy. Studying.
Okay. Anybody else care to be heard at privilege of the floor? Seeing now, I'll close privilege of the floor and we'll move on to item number five, which is a resolution approving the grant awards for case number 6N2906, connection with the Village of Scotia Housing Rehabilitation Program. Before I get a motion in a second, I'll just describe for our pig student that the village has a series of grants, we're in the second round of those grants where we provide money to qualified residents for fixing up their house, they have to be financially qualified and it's not a loan, it's an actual grant that is overseen by an outside agency and that way we get some of the houses in the village fixed up that normally would not be able to be repaired. The reasoning here in a case number rather than a name is for the privacy of the person. So item number five is to approve the award for case number 6N2906.
Make a motion.
A second. Any discussion? Please call it all.
Trustee Mathis.
Yes.
Trustee Gifford.
Yes.
Trustee Zaman.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Casker.
Item six is a resolution for the same grant source for case number 6N2907. Motion. Second. Any discussion? Please call it all.
Trustee Mathis.
Yes.
Trustee Gifford.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Casker.
Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the submission of the 2016-17 Justice Court Assistance Program Grant Application for a pig student. This is a grant program through the court that is aimed at providing necessary equipment and supplies for the court that might not be affordable to regular municipality. This DS that we're sitting at right here is one of the examples of what was paid for through that grant. This year's grant will ask for a file cabinet, battery backup for the computer system and some of the books that are necessary for the office. Anybody care to authorize that submission?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Any discussion? Please call it all.
Trustee Mathis.
Yes.
Trustee Gifford.
Yes.
Trustee Zaman.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Casker.
Item number seven is the approval of new volunteer firefighter Jason Zarbuni or Roney Chief?
Roney.
Roney?
Roney.
So.
I'll make a.
Okay.
A second.
This one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So here's one we need to take care of, he takes care of parking tickets in the city. A civilian officer taking care of the, yeah.
Item number nine is authorize a surplus of the 2006 Chevy Impala, which was Lewis's car and some old police radios.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 10 is a public announcement for the date and time of Halloween. So the date is October 31st, believe it or not, it's a Monday. Time is four to eight for trick-or-treating and will we have the cider and donuts scheduled? Is that out yet?
It's out.
It's out, so that'll be put on the website as soon as I ask Theresa to do it. So happy Halloween. Item number 10 is mayor's comments to the board. First thing I want to do is draw your attention to the artwork that's around Village Hall. This is artwork from various grade levels and different buildings here in the district. They do this every year to brighten up our Village Hall, so I appreciate that. I want to let you know that I received a letter from Superintendent Schwartz thanking us, I'll just quickly paraphrase it, "I'm writing a thank you for the new sidewalks which were installed this summer on Alabian and Skimmer Hard Streets, the extension of the sidewalk on Alabian Street front of Lydton Elementary School and to the high school is wonderful, as is the addition of the sidewalk along Skimmer Hard Street. Scottish Glenville students who walk to school have a safer passage thanks to your commitment and the support of the trustees." Got to thank you for that, Susan. I also, I know you can't see it, but I just want to show you, you'll be looking for this. This is the flyer for the Musicians of Malwic, a chamber music organization. They're not stationed in Scotia, but they're from Scotia and this year, for the first time, they're going to do a free performance at the Flynn House, Saturday, June 3rd, so there's plenty of time to get ready for it. They're doing it to coincide with the Village-wide garage sale, hoping that that increases their audience and it'll be an outdoor constructor attempt. So I appreciate the fact that they're planning it so early because it makes sure that all the glitches will be worked out, so I'm looking forward to that. I think we've already discussed our paving, but Washington Avenue is already, is completed. Where else are we, Andrew?
Riverside Avenue and South Tambocks. Those finished today, so we're done.
Oh, great.
Great.
Yes, they look wonderful, by the way. Thank you.
Okay, nice.
I just want to give you a heads up, there's a, there's a new business model or a new company in the village and around here called Mobility and they're basically, I don't know if you call them a repeater system or whatever, but they gather cell signals and sell them back to the company. I think they're an attempt for some carriers other than Verizon to increase their coverage. But the unusual thing is that the tower that they want to use is 75 feet tall and 40 inches in diameter. They initially asked for a permit to put one of those in our right of way, which I think you probably agree that wouldn't be appropriate. I'm meeting with all the principals, Andrew, Lydia, Louis, and me to talk about, you know, how we deal with this and what the best answer for this. And a lot of communities are, this is a new business model, but they've come to a lot of communities, so there's a lot of talk about this company and how the size of the poles that they want to put up in the communities, so. So I should be able to give you a little more information next time we meet. Tomorrow morning at 10:30, I'm meeting with Andrew, some people from the Rotary and DOT at the BMX or the CX, CSX Bridge. There's a proposal to put a visual, nice-looking visual block across the bridge to block the graffiti that is suspended out from the bridge, so it's not possible to reach out and paint it. So basically, anything to be painted on the bridge by the speed of.
Don't say not possible. More than.
Well.
You're trying to challenge people.
So the idea is that when you come in, you'll see, well, the Village of Scotia, as you go out, you'll see, please come back soon and it'll block graffiti that's on that I tried to send each of you the newest draft of the town-village comprehensive plan, but the file was so large, it kept kicking back from yours for security reasons and from yours because you couldn't take the size of the file. I don't know if the two of you got it. Okay, so what I'm going to do then is.
I already got it.
Oh, you did? Where'd you download it?
The town website.
From the town website, so it's there. If you, if you can't do that, if you can't download it from the town website and you want me to, I'll burn you a disk of it. Some of you guys, please let me know. And the last thing I just wanted to give you an update on is that we were successful in our bulletproof vest program. We were awarded $2,000, which will buy us five new bulletproof vests for this year. Those are my comments. Item 12 is correspondence liaison and special committee reports. Trustee Mathis. Nothing very important. Trustee Gifford.
Well, you heard about the planning board meeting, we also had a fire department meeting, which was uneventful. And I just wanted to add to your sidewalk thing from Susan Schwartz. I was campaigning along, I don't remember if it was Alexander Avenue or Lark Street, but out in that direction. I got two adjacent houses, one woman saying how horrible she thought the sidewalks were right next to ours, the guy said, "Oh, this is all great." And it wasn't Andrew.
Trustee Zaman.
Nothing.
Trustee Rizzo.
I attended Monday night the Holiday on the Avenue meeting, it's going to be our 20th anniversary for Holiday on the Avenue and we are planning some new items that are going to be on the street. We are extending the parade, we're going to have a little bigger parade since it's our 20th anniversary and there's a lot of new things forthcoming. We're working on it now as we speak and we should have things put together within the timeframe we have, but it looks like it's going to be a bigger thing we usually have because of the 20th anniversary. It's going to be a number of people here, we've got a band, a few other items, chorus, choral ears that are going to be playing in the bank. And we're also putting a slideshow on from the first conception of the Holiday Avenue up to date of last year. The county's going to let us borrow their outside screen and I think we're going to have it set up on the street so people can see it as it goes along. And we're also going to be showing some other slideshow on it, but that's some of the things we're going to do on it. So we're looking forward to putting the plan together, it looks like it's coming together pretty good, we've got a lot of good people on that.
Good.
So we're working on it. That's it.
Thank you. Item 13 is departmental reports. Any questions or comments on departmental reports? Care to move to accept those?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 14, order of claims.
Make a motion, pass it up, okay, adults?
I'll second our motion.
Any discussion? Please call it all.
Trustee Mathis.
Yes.
Trustee Gifford.
Yes.
Trustee Zaman.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Casker.
Yes. The approval of the minutes of the September 14th regular meeting of the trustees?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 16 is the approval of the minutes of the September 14th regular meeting, or special meeting of the trustees.
A second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 17, new business. Item seventeen, new business. Anybody have any new business items for tonight? I have only one. At the point that, that, I'm trying to think who resigned. At the point that Terry Jackson took over as chair of our zoning board of deals, he told me he would do it until the new members had some experience, that he really was looking to wean himself away from his service to the village. So he did that. I got his letter of resignation yesterday, talked to him on the phone. He's leaving with a lot of positive thoughts, but it's just, he's done his time, and he's ready to move on, and he feels like other members have enough experience now to take over. I think I'll be able to tell you who the next chair will be after I speak to the person, but I just want to make sure I have a good bio to give you guys. Our code says that the chair will be appointed. It doesn't say who will appoint the chair. I'm taking the leap that the intention of our code was that the trustees would appoint the chair, so in our next meeting, I'll give you a name. But that still leaves a vacancy, so I'm gonna leave it to Tom and Joe, because you've been here for quite a while, and I'll give you one guess, who has agreed to step forward and fill Terry Jackson's vacancy for the remainder of his term. Tommy Ols has agreed to step up and fill Terry Jackson's term until that expires, and so.
Good.
So that would, so to fill a vacancy is the mayor's appointment, so I hereby appoint Tommy Ols to fill a vacancy of Terry Jackson for a term to expire 12/2019. Any new business? Can I just make my statement? I didn't screw up the entire agenda. I didn't miss anything. That's a new thing. Any take on what's due, Jerry? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.